We do road call, right?
Yes.
Let's do road call. Mayor Lozano.
Accent.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Accent.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Resid.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Accent.
And our mayor, Potem Cruzbaca. I'd like to open up for public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have one and a half minutes.
I thought we were going to have five.
I want to get out of here. Sorry, guys. Three minutes, everybody.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I want to address the Bynum lawsuit I know that you guys are going to be discussing. I've done my research, and at both of the meetings when this thing was brought up, there's never been a council majority vote that this thing go to court and be heard and spend a lot of money on it. It's just been a thing to where, okay, what I see right now is, is defending the thing of telling the developer will work with them and help the project along, but not sitting here spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of the city's money to fight this Bynum project that is not our problem. It's been there for longer than the residents have been there. They bought their homes there, and they bought what it is. The other thing, I wanted to inform Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, the land over by my shop is not vacant, and it's not open for discussion to sell and use for Mount SAC, because I talked to Laura Santos today, and it seems that that was discussed over at the Mount SAC meeting. So I'd like to inform you that Mr. Shapiro has no intentions of selling, and him the domain is not open for an option.
It is for school.
I'm talking, please. I'm talking. Okay. So then, the other thing is, press release, I noticed that's on the city website, talking about the WorkSource Center. Seems that the only one that gets credit on there is Mr. Pacheco. Cruzbaca, the business association's been helping working on there. I think if we're going to put press releases in the website, it needs to include the people that are all included in there. Because your girl's the one writing the press release, that doesn't mean that the other people shouldn't be. I'm talking right now, please. Thank you. Okay, so, the other thing that I see that needs to stop, and this was due through Connie's audit and seeing a lot of the stuff that's come out and stuff, we need to stop the Internet service for two special people. Everybody else doesn't get it except for Ricardo Pacheco and Monica Garcia. That needs to stop. There's no reason. You have your iPads. You can use that for your Internet, which we pay for. I want to thank the audit company, Brown and Armstrong. I think they did a very thorough job. I'm looking forward to the other audit that we got coming up. And I know Craig had a lot of painstaking deals out of there, but I think our findings were dead on of what we've complained about as people for eight, nine years that needed to be addressed, and I have no, I do not blame the staff here, because it was the people that run the staff that had the problems, because they didn't run the city the proper way, and they didn't hire a firm that knew what they were doing. They hired a firm that did what they wanted them to do, and that is make this look good, but don't find anything wrong. And that's what happened for many years. So I'd like to thank Brown and Armstrong on that. And...
Mr. Tuttle? I'm sorry.
It's... Are you sure? I'm watching that red... I know I have twenty seconds.
Can we give you a few extra seconds?
All right. Thank you.
In all fairness, can I throw up a little bit more into two minutes?
I'm good.
Can I give a little bit?
Hello, I'm Mr. Luna. I have a disagreement, and I agree 100% with the gentleman that just spoke. These meetings are supposed to be run and start at a certain time. If you can't get here on time, where in the heck are you? You get paid to come here and run part of the city. If you can't do that on time, you don't run here. You should pack your stuff and start leaving. I'll tell you one thing, if you worked for my employer when I was working, they'd have gave you your walking papers right down the street. And when somebody is speaking, Mr. Pacheco, it's not your turn to speak. You'll have plenty of time. You can speak on my subject and his for the next 10 hours. Nobody I tell you to shut up. Well, we're telling you that when we speak, you don't have the right reason here. You don't like that? I mean, that's how simple it is, young man. We can't interrupt you, you shouldn't interrupt us. If I interrupt you, I guarantee you'll have the chief of police and his crew dragging my you-know-what out on the street. So should we do the same to you? Think about it. Also, in the parking lot, you got eight red marks down there that says Reserve Parking. Who works for this city of Baldwin Park that is that darn special? None of you are president of this country. Why are you got privileged parking or whoever using that area, and the rest of us got to park wherever? You gotta walk from there to here, whoever's parking there. You got a police car. Okay, it might be sold, I don't really care. You need to extra parking area, put it on top of the roof. There's plenty of room up there, and if it's being occupied with the wrong vehicles, tow them out. You know, this city council started out real good. Let me tell you, lately, some of you are going the wrong way. We don't pay you to go the opposite direction of what we all want. You got 75,000 people in Baldwin Park, and you're going the other way. Some of you giving the city away. I already told you, want to give the city away? Give us all free taxes, we'll take it. Why should you guys give anything away? You want some, somebody wants to build something, you have them give the city something. We can't even give you tax money. You got a soccer league out there, we're paying for their cleanup, their mess, their destruction, and you guys sit here saying that's okay. I don't think it's okay, because I got to pay for that and everybody else in here. So why are you allowing it? How would you like it if some guy parked across your street, threw all the trash out there, and said, "Hey, city, come and clean it up"?
Mr. Luna?
Ran out of time again.
John Reels, resident. That violent thing, you know, is getting a little too old. The citizens of Baldwin Park don't want anybody going to court for that. You know, why are we spending our money for a few individuals on stage? You know? What are we getting out of it? The guy's going to win. Why are we spending the time and effort, the money, if we go after them? We're not. We're not going to get nothing out of it. Another thing on Manobalo, there was a $1,000 donation to a certain individual, you know. This is where we're coming out with that buddy system that we're getting into. Same thing as we have that buddy system with the roller coasters, the buddy system for the trash company, the soccer league and everything, the buddy system. I was at Barnes last night, 8:30. The buddy had around over 200 kids, the soccer league. Who's, you know, what are they paying on us? What are they paying the city to use that whole park to reserve it for them? The lights, everything? Then we have Morgan Park, the front of it. Sixty kids practicing in there. There's supposed to be a green travel league. Doesn't matter. We don't have to start charging them. We had a function right there, church group, they were charged for a fifth of what Barnes Park pays. The trash cans are all filled up with the trash. The street afterwards, I went this morning, took pictures of it. They don't take care of it. We have two city employees going through the field cleaning it up. Come on, come on, you guys. Wake up. The people are getting worse, tired of it, you know. Like I tell, you know, my neighbors, I tell my neighbor, "Do you guys want to pray? You want to make a group"? All of you. Talk at the city council. Okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Reels, if you have some photos of some of that, and you could give that to Mr. Dan Wall.
I talked to Dan. I stopped by and talked to Dan personally this morning, and I don't know what was happening, and he can see, take care of it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? I will close public communication. We will now go into open session, which is a study session, and first of all, we'll have a presentation by Connie Perez from Brown Armstrong, leading cities audit. We'll be discussed.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Connie Perez, and I am an audit partner with Brown Armstrong, your new attorney.
Can she use the microphone?
Oh, can you use the microphone?
She's got to solve the voice. You can't.
Sorry.
Okay, let's hopefully have it on.
Can you help them a little bit?
No, I thought I had it turned on.
Should I be?
You have to hold it close.
Okay. Wow. Again, my name is Connie Perez, and I'm a partner with Brown Armstrong, your new CPA firm that was hard to conduct the external audit of the city. And today, I will be presenting along with Craig, the director, find out the results of the audit. We met on the 27th with the audit committee and went over everything in detail. We met for about, I think it was close to two hours, and went over the results, all the findings, all the reports. So we're just going to summarize that meeting here today. Number one is the purpose of the audit is to render an opinion on your financial statements, and through the audit that we conducted, we came up with an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements of the city. So I want to congratulate the staff for all of their hard work during the year to make sure that that was possible. The second item is the audit process. Since this is our first year auditing the city, we had to do a lot of initial setup of everything, you know, getting to know the staff, the internal controls. And so coordination with the staff is very important. We had a number of meetings. Craig and I probably talked on the phone every day since we came on board, just to make sure that we were on track. And so we had meetings throughout the engagement and up until today. When we come in, as I mentioned, we look at all of the internal controls. We have to interview people at different levels, different departments, to document our understanding of internal controls. And through that process, we did, we did identify some findings that we'll go over later. As part of our audit, we also send out confirmations to third parties, including your legal counsel to see if there's anything that should be included in the financial statements. We perform our audit in two different periods. Our first one is our interim testing, where we come in and we test key areas, which I'll go over shortly. And we also do walkthroughs of all of those key areas and document them for our work papers. We are also required by accounting standards to interview different people, including the chair or members of the audit committee as it relates to fraud. And so we interviewed a lot of different city employees and also the audit committee to see if there was any areas of concern, and through those interviews, we did add additional procedures to our audits related to that. And then, obviously, because it's our first year, we have to obtain copies of all of your contracts for our permanent files and policies and procedures, et cetera. Then we move into final field work. This is when we come back, I think we were here in October, for a few weeks, and this is after the books have been closed. So Craig provides our trial balance, which we audit all of the numbers and look at material accounts, and also the numbers that will go into the note disclosure so that they are included in the financial statements. If there's any open items for our interim field work, we finalize them during that time. We are also required to review your minutes up until the meeting that's closest to issuance date, which in this case was, we issued our report, I think, December 29th. So we had to review minutes up until that point, because if there's anything that happened after June 30th that impacts the city or its audit, we have to document that in the financial statements. And there was nothing to report as a subsequent event. And as I mentioned, we met with the audit committee, and then today, we're presenting to the city council. Here is a list of the significant audit areas for the city. These are the areas where we spent most of the audit effort. It's going over some of these areas. We added, as I mentioned, because of interviews with various individuals. Other items. Other items that were of concern throughout the years here at the city. So we looked at those and issues and findings related to that. And then, that's Craig's turn, so.
I think the battery is...
Are you done?
Yeah. No, it's yours.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's on, you can turn it off.
We received three reports initially from Brown and Armstrong. The first one was, and they're part of the CAFER, the first one was the independent audit report, which summarizes the scope of their work and issues and opinion. And as Connie said, we received a clean opinion on this year's CAFER. And, you know, that's the big thing for any finance staff. They also did a special review of how the appropriations limit is calculated. It's called the GAN limit. We had a transposition number in our population base, and so it threw it off a little bit, but our limit is over 65 million that we would be authorized to spend general fund revenue, and we're at 25 million. So the few thousand dollars there really didn't amount to anything significant, except that it's re-review some of our preparation. The third one, which is, they call, has a big title, "Read Upon Conditions Report Designed to Increase Efficiency: Internal Controls or Financial Reporting." We call it a management letter or recommendations for improvement from the auditors. And those are the three reports of which we received, of which you received copies a couple of weeks ago. In terms of the CAFER or the financial report, we did get a clean opinion. While we spend most of our time talking about general funds throughout the year, they audited all our funds and our debt service schedules and everything. So you see that in the notes, plus you see as you go through the schedules, all of the special funds, both revenues and balances throughout that. And those have all been audited by the staff of Brown and Armstrong. Our general fund ending balance as of June 30th was 6.3 million. We had revenues and transfers in of 25,243,0971, and expenditures and transfers out of On the recommendations that came, there were 15 recommendations. The vast majority are really a result of the fact that, like all the departments in the city, staff was cut several years with the recession, and so it's like one of the things was minutes, because we had no full-time staff in the clerk's office. Certain numbers of policies, they say are needing to be updated. We have some, a lot of our policies actually go back to 1987, and while they are in effect and are still viable, there are areas of it that do need to be updated to deal with both changes in what GASP has set up and just technology itself. And then there's several procedures that they identified that need to be modified. One of the major things that came out of this was the computer system we have currently needs a major upgrade, both in terms of staff time, in terms of support with other departments, and in the fact that our current system does not produce initially reports that they need to use, that we call are in a GASP format. And so we're reproducing reports, trying to transpose them in a format that they can use to evaluate. Several of the recommendations have already been implemented, and most of the 15, we will have implemented or will be doing major work on in the next few months and should have completed by the end of the audit. The several that will probably extend to the next year are, depending on how much of the finance policies we can get done, we may not get all of them done. Obviously, it takes a while to both select and implement a new computer system, but we are going to make major progress toward that goal. And the last one is what's called a capital assets valuation report. That we need to deal with first, identifying what assets need to be sold off, and once those are sold off, then doing an inventory of our current assets, and then at one point, to actually comply with GASP accounting standards, we'll have to bring in and out consultants to do the valuation. But the other 12 to 13 are all very manageable, and we should be able to finish and complete in the next few months. And I think that is our report in summary, and so we're available for any questions that you may have at this point.
I'd like to thank, I believe Christie was the one that put the minutes together, and I don't know if someone else assisted you, but I want to thank you very much, because from what I understand, it was pretty intensive, to say the least. Thank you very much, and thanks to staff, of course. I know that even during some of the Christmas holidays, I believe that...
During the Christmas holidays?
I believe that Craig, even though he said we didn't want them working, I believe that Craig and Rose were here till 11 o'clock at night or something, trying to meet the deadlines, and I really appreciate it. I know that the rest of the council members do too as well. And I'm really excited about, you know, all the things that need to be put in place or all the things that many of us have discussed on many occasions. And these were things that I particularly had bothered me for a while before I was a council member. And it's also from hearing some of my fellow residents that come up and ask about certain things that they were being done, the certain process of things. And I feel that we're in the right direction now and looking forward to implementing all of this. And of course, above all, the computer program, to be able to take care of a lot of this.
It will be a major help, but it's just one of the things that we will be working on in the next few months.
Well, and I want to thank the auditing committee, because, I mean, it wasn't just done in one day, just for the record, for the public's knowledge. We really did spend a lot of time going back and forth, you know, with the company Brown Armstrong, also Tuttle, residents. We really had a gamut of people, just making sure that there was oversight and it wasn't done, you know, one way or another, but everyone was invited to participate. Another thing that I, you know, so thank you for everyone that participated, including our residents and our business partners. But one of the things that I want to put on the record, because it bothered me for a long time, and for those of you including you that weren't, was not in the council, being the previous elected city clerk, one of the things that I fought hard for was to have a city clerk, and I know Mr. Reels, and I think it was you who keeps talking about how we're just approving the minutes of today, but for a long time, you know, I wasn't in a position to make decisions, and I really did fight hard to have a city clerk. I know it's one of the most important positions we can have. We've had a couple of lawsuits out of that, and we've ended up having to pay out because we didn't have such an important position. And again, I fought hard, I fought publicly, and I wasn't successful, but now that we could do it, Mr. Reels, now we do have someone in place, and we apologize that it took this long, but there was nothing we could do at the time, and that's why we're fixing things little by little. And yeah, the ladies have done a phenomenal job of catching up. I mean, there were years and years, and no one could understand it better than these ladies, how hard it is to go back and listen to their audio and do all of that, and so how difficult it was for our finance, you know, personnel here and Connie to go and try and figure things out when we didn't have the records. So at the end of the day, I guess the message should be is, we're on the right path, we're making a lot of corrections that needed to be made, and hopefully, these things like the minutes and the budget and all the loopholes and different corporations and sections of the city, all of that would be a thing of the past. So thank you to everyone that participated.
And I'd like to add to that, Ms. Rubio was working very hard to try to get a city clerk, because, you know, I'm part-time and I'm not always in here, and that's one of the reasons why the minutes got so behind. And I apologize for coming to you so much. I came to her I don't know how many times, and she didn't try to get somebody in her sooner. So Christie has a blessing, and she's caught us up to where we should be, so we should continue doing all of the minutes and everything else that needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, Mayor Potem. I think it's important that we look back at the changes that we made early in the year. We didn't get to change out the whole management team. We dismissed a number of officials at that point and put in a new team that was able to really bring to light a lot of the things that I think would have been allowed for the city council to see and make decisions. And a lot of decisions were made based on not telling us the right information, you know, the sheriffs, trying to change our sheriffs, the police officers. And I argued, you know, last year when all these issues were coming up, how we didn't have the right information to be able to make that decision. And I knew there was really the budgets to handle, the police department, and we did that, and it became evident once we started with a new management team coming in place and really just bringing things out in the open. I mean, there was no hidden or secret power. Everybody just came out and was really able to see transparent where our budget was, where we would just stand where we would make, you know, better decisions in those areas. So I did read the budget really important in the audit. And there was a number of funds that we never even went to balance, or at least now we have an idea of all the special funds of what we have and to guide us to make better decisions. So I think it's important, I think, there's a lot of changes that have to make in our policies, there's equipment that's needed, software, hardware that we should use, some of the funds that we have got recently to invest in our finance department, whatever positions or whatever we need to be in. It's important that we always know what our standard is. I think staff has an opportunity to have a clean slate and be able to start from what we have here and build upon that. And one day, I did talk to our city manager today, we were talking about doing revenue enhancement programs, and a lot of our staff, the police department, the public works, you know, staff and council and our management team have come up with a number of innovative ways to be able to generate revenue. And I think the policy here in the city, or at least the position that we've always been, let's just work with the revenue that we have, and that's always kind of diminishing and stays the same. And we need to start to look at new resources to bring more revenue into our city, because the cost of living is going to be the cost of wages for employees, the cost of all those supplies. So we need to look at that and try to do that in the right direction. And also, with our new legal team, the Robert Tocorri, who's here, has done an outstanding job in a lot of the legal issues, a lot of the, I know early on, you said you would take on the port cases and save money by stopping them when you can. We've surely done that, you know, fabulous job of doing that, and recently, it's sort of the cases that we have, the filings that we've had, I know we're almost, these Kaden Square cases are not continue to go forward, so they're very limited. So I'm very glad for our new legal teams, for all of these people that are here. Thanks to all our management, auditing. Greg, we're pretty hard. Tell them always, relax for the first time. But anyways, thank you all.
And I want to make one last comment, if I may. One of the things that it's very difficult sometimes for constituents to understand is that we put ourselves in a vulnerable position. If any of you read the Tribune and saw all the things that we're doing wrong in this bidding, I mean, it really sounds horrible. It sounds like we're not doing our job. I mean, they listed all our deficiencies, and ultimately, you know, this team that's here pushed really, really hard. here pushed really, really hard to have a new audit, to really be transparent, to really find those deficiencies and fix them. Unfortunately, as they reported, you know, it sounds like this team here is, you know, misusing funds and doing inappropriate stuff, but again, that's what we have to do as leaders, and it needed to be fixed. And so when I read the Tribune, that was really interesting to me because they don't talk about, you know, the push that we made to make those changes because we really wanted to have our staffing, we really wanted to take care of our police, our, you know, our employees and our residents, but that's not what they talked about. They talked about all the negative things that we're doing in the city. And again, we have to take the hits, and that's why we're here to fix things.
To the city.
Yeah, so, you know, I was thinking of, you know, all our residents are constantly coming to our council meetings, you know, talking about our deficiencies, and this is an opportunity to say, wait a minute, you know, this is a team that fought hard to make sure that everyone knows what's happening, everything's clear, and it needed to happen. As bad as it sounded in the Tribune and everything that we're doing wrong, it needed to happen, and so either way, you know, we take the responsibility, and we're happy that we have a new team on board and that we're fixing everything. And again, so believe you guys will be our ambassadors and really send the message out, it needed to happen, and this is the process. In order to fix things, we needed to really find all the loopholes and everything that we were doing wrong. So again, thank you once again for all your support.
Go ahead. And I was just going to comment that I deal with a lot of audit committees with all of our clients throughout the state of California, and I have to say that this audit committee is probably one of the most engaged audit committees in the process, so I give you, thank you for that. And when we were onsite conducting the audit, they even came in and met with me initially just to see the plan that we had presented to the staff, they got copies of everything. So they made this an easy process as well, so I just want to thank you for that.
And no, and thank you, Connie, but that was the whole purpose, I'll just say this and then we'll close, the whole purpose to have the audit committee and to meet quarterly, or in this instance, we met sooner because year end was coming and there were a lot of questions, and then we met shortly after the new year. So I really believe that that's the whole purpose of this audit committee, for us to be able to see what's happening as we move into the new year and into the old, and out of the old. So I really do believe that it's very, very important, if you, you know, if you ever have a chance to sit in, you're welcome to come to the audit committee and, you know, and listen to what we do, and it's very interesting.
And a lot of cities, and I think this is the first time I met Craig, I made a presentation specifically about audit committees, and a lot of cities don't have audit committees, which is unfortunate, so it's kind of, it's a good thing that the city decided to put a team together to do that.
Let me also add that because it's an audit team, only two councilors could attend those committees, and the five of us could attend, and all of us were participating, and literally could, but the brown ass, two of us could. I also appreciate the fact that we wrote your audit report that it was in layman's terms, a lot of it was easy to read, you know, I'm not a finance expert, and I was able to follow a lot of what it looked like, and I never found that in our previous audit reports, just the way it was written, just you could really follow it, you know, what's going on.
Good, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to audit the city.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Tuttel, isn't that one of the things that the residents and business owners were pushing for at the time we met, was write it in terms that we can understand and don't--
And we, there's Vargas in here, and she was so on it, and if I can have two minutes, I want to just say something on your newspaper article.
I think--
There's a lot of people that don't think what you're thinking is positive, because the thing is, we came in here, all our group, to fight to get the council to start doing and do a new audit, do a new company. They know those findings are only because we had a crappy auditor. We had somebody that didn't want to look for things. So they're happy that it got brought out. It's only the few negative people, and I won't give names out, that want to say, well, look what it's all-- No, this is things we talked about for nine years, fighting, that this wasn't right. Okay, it's out, we're fixing it, and that's the word that's out. It's not the other way, so there's only a few. Tribune doesn't always get the story right, and they want to always, they sell negativity, but the thing is, it's a very positive thing what we did, and we need to bring it to the public, we need to put it to the council, we need to get it out and tell everybody, look, the new people came in, we have a new audit coming, and this is the things we found that's not been done since 1987, and it's true, we need to fix it. So we agree, and that's what we're doing and moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you very much, everybody, really, this was--
Any questions?
Wonderful experience. Any other questions?
Let Connie go, even though this is on the consent calendar.
Okay.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie.
Well, good evening, and what I'm going to present to you tonight, we had back several months ago, several months ago, we had some requests by some billboard company to put some billboards along the freeway corridor, and at the time, we didn't really know how to approach a service presentation, it's really to help you, how are we going to deal with billboard companies as they come along? So we, as you can see, some of the goals are pretty much to know how to respond when we have a request for billboard, and what do we need to do in order to be able to implement those requests on the long term? And of course, the long term generates some additional revenue if we can capitalize on the freeway corridor, the freeway frontage that we have, both the I-10 and the 605 corridors. So what are really the challenges, they are twofold. One is really Caltrans regulation, and Caltrans actually has something that's called the landscape freeway regulation, and then there'll be two challenges with the city of Baldwin Park zoning code, that right now has some very stiff criteria in order to put some billboard, and we're going to go through it as we go on the presentation. So let's take number one, the landscape freeway. The Caltrans has new regulation that says whenever there is a landscape along the freeway, then you cannot have any outdoor advertising at all. And the landscape, you know, is really defined by any landscape, whether it's a vine growing on the wall, or a tree or some grass that has been planted along the freeway, then it is immediately classified as a landscape freeway and falls under the Outdoor Advertising Act. So what do we have as a result of those regulations? Well, now if you see the red line on the 605 and the 10 freeway, that means that that portion of the freeway is actually classified as a landscape freeway. And as you can see, the entire Baldwin Park frontage, both 605 and the 10 freeway are classified as such. What you see, the circle, the red circle, show the 500 feet radius between two static billboard, and the black circle, which is a thousand feet radius, shows the limitation between a digital billboard. So we only have one digital billboard that pisses off, it's a clear channel, and then the other one, a various company listed on the right side there. So Caltrans, additional regulation, Caltrans says you cannot have more than one billboard between 500 feet and another one between 1000 feet, so that greatly limit the amount of billboard, the new billboard that we could have. So what does really is the capacity along the freeway? So there are two major exceptions to the landscape freeway regulation. One, we could request that the freeway be declassified from the previous classification, and that can only be done if the landscape actually per se disappears, whether it's being removed because the freeway is being widened, or whether the landscape dies, and then we could make an application to be declassified. Once declassified, then of course we could have almost an over the counter permit to put a billboard. Or the second possibility is that if a company, a billboard company, could request a billboard to be relocated within a freeway, a landscape freeway, that means that if, let's say, the company has a billboard on the 60 freeway or the 215 freeway, that freeway is being, some work is being done, and Caltrans is requesting that the billboard be removed, then that company could ask that billboard instead of being removed to be relocated into another location of freeway. And if that landscape, if that portion is actually landscaped, then there's also a credit that comes into play. Each, Caltrans assigns a certain value to each billboard based on the size, whether it's static, digital, you know, whether it's the location, everything, and each billboard has a certain value, sort of a certain number of credit. Of course, if a relocation happens within a landscape freeway, the major corridor like the 10 freeway, then they would ask for a very, a lot of credit. And I'm not going to get into the formula as to how Caltrans assigns us credit because it's really a question that I could not get answer from Caltrans themselves. Apparently, there's only a few people that know how this formula work, and they were very secretive, and I could not really get access to those formula. Some companies have credits available and some do not have, and again, that's another industry secret. Billboard companies do not want to reveal how many credits they hold and what their applications are. And actually, there's a last point, between the last 10 years, Caltrans has received about 51 requests to have a declassification, declassification request, and only about 46% less than half were actually approved by Caltrans. Now let's talk a little bit about the zoning code, the way the zoning code reads today. The zoning code says, here's my red card, that in order to be able to put one digital billboard, you need to permanently remove four structures, which is a double side, which are eight billboards. And of course, and then the next step, if you want one more, or five more, if you want five more, then you have to remove two additional faces for each freeway. The problem that that creates is that some companies, some billboard companies actually either have less than four existing, or do not have any billboard existing in Baldwin Park, which pretty much take them totally out of the game, because those companies can, would never be able to apply for a digital billboard in Baldwin Park because they have nothing to remove. They have nothing but the code, they could not remove any existing billboard. So what are really the challenges? The challenges with regard to the zoning code, that like I said, some companies do not have, have less than four billboard, or some do not have any presence in Baldwin Park at all. So what are the options? The option would be maybe to change the ratio. Should we eliminate, totally eliminate the ratio of take down whenever somebody wants to put a new billboard? Or should we change the ratio, maybe if one equal two static instead of four static or eight statics? Or if somebody does not have any billboard at all existing in Baldwin Park, should we create a fee in lieu, where somebody would be able to pay a fee instead of taking down a billboard if they don't have any existing right now in Baldwin Park? So that's one of the options that maybe we need to look at. So really the question that we, this is the last slide, about this issue, Tom, how do we address the landscape freeway classification, considering that Caltrans as a gateway does not allow any digital billboard within the landscape, and how do we want to approach it? We want to stick to classification, which may be close to, you know, very difficult. And then what happened if a billboard company has a relocation credit, then how many billboard will be willing to entertain on this corridor? Let's say that the company comes and they really have a massive amount of credits available to Caltrans, and Caltrans allow the relocation between, you know, within the landscape freeway, how many billboard would the council be comfortable approving under those conditions? And then lastly, you know, now we have to look at our own zoning code, I mean, what do we do about this requirement that we have today? That says if you want to have one billboard, you pretty much have to remove, you know, four faces to it. And that's really complete the presentation, we'll have for discussion.
Let me ask you, because this is, this is a lot to sort of think about. First of all, just today I was at a meeting, and the one thing that I didn't like at the meeting when they asked where I was from, I said I'm from Baldwin Park, and they said, oh, we know Baldwin Park because when you edge of the ballpark limits, you see the graffiti along the side where Kaiser Hospital is. So what I'm thinking is that if we go ahead with these billboards and we do away with the landscape, what do we do about the graffiti and to sort of make it inviting as people are entering Baldwin Park? Do we need to change assortments now? Is it something that, or the zoning code, or whatever it is, can, is it something that we can look into? Oh, I'm sorry.
You can change the zoning code without changing the landscape freeway? The problem is, is then you can only have billboard companies that come in that have credits that can relocate billboards to the area. So you would have some limitations.
Can they force us, can Caltrans force us to take on one of those credits that they've offered?
No, no, no.
Okay, because one of the things that I have to say, and I think this is something that we've been fighting for a long while, first of all, there's no way I would agree to declassify, that is an absolute. I would say no. I mean, it's ridiculous that, you know, we're always asked to--
Make exceptions.
To make exceptions. No other city will do it, because clearly, you know, we are park for, plant for, and we continue to be the city that lacks, you know, aesthetically, and again, we continue to be the target for these, you know, companies, and like I said, I'm going to put on the record, there's no way I'm going to agree to declassify. And one of the things that we talked about, and she just shared, you go Baldwin Park freeway, you know it's Baldwin Park, as soon as you cross over to West Glavina, you have the shrubbery, the greenery hanging over the freeway all the way down. How is that possible? So like I said, I just think that there's no way I'm going to agree, and I don't know what we can do about this, but there's no way I'm going to stand for it.
And actually, in terms of the shrubbery, it's a good point, actually, because actually Caltrans has planted already all along Garvey on the other side of the wall, it's all planted, and eventually it's going to grow over the wall and spill over the other side. And that's what, that's enough for them to classify as landscape freeway.
But if you declassify, and then that, that could be--
Declassifying, I want to say, is some awesome viewpoint, because Caltrans really does not declassify unless, like I said, unless either the landscape dies because of due to maintenance or whatever reason, or the landscape is removed because the freeway is even further widened, which I don't think is going to happen because they just need their work. So I just put it out there because, you know, we could ask some legislator to help support the declassification process, but that would be a very difficult process, and it's not a thing that we recommend, but that's your choice.
I agree with Chris right now in that it's, I mean, I have to, for me, I have to just look into it a little further because, I mean, I know there's a lot of companies that want to come into our city, but once again, they're thinking dollar amount for their business, for their pockets, they're not thinking what we have, our residents, what we have in our community, and, you know, even just having the billboards, even if it's, again, greenery, shrubbery, and you have all these billboards, I mean, you start looking like industrial city rather than a community. So I, like I said, to me, I would like to keep it at a minimum of what we have right now and not saturate the freeway with all these billboards. And one of the things that we struggle with is that once we let them have it, and I know that in previous years we have like certain restrictions, they go ahead and put things anyways, and, you know, for everyone that's out there, just to understand, they'll put things like, you know, gentleman clubs and, you know, things that I perceive to be inappropriate and just gives a wrong message, and once you let them have it, I mean, even though they agree to these, you know, stipulations, somehow they end up with gentleman clubs and stripper clubs, and I'm, for me, I don't want it in our community.
The council direction could be to do actually nothing and just leave it as is until we have another request, and then we'll decide at that time.
Because I would rather the landscaping, and you're right, thank you for bringing up Garvey, because I cut through there, off of Franciscito lot, and I don't know when it was done, but a few weeks ago was the first time that I noticed they even got some Berta Paradise with some chips or whatever, wood chips, and that looks very nice, it's clean. Yes, there's, I saw no graffiti--
It's small, but it's--
Except maybe one of the drain things a little bit, but it looks very, very nice, and I would like to see more and more of that, and if we don't have the plants, it's understood that the graffiti, they're wide open spaces for graffiti.
And I will also add to that, yeah, you know, right now we're doing a specific downtown plan, and I think in many ways, like, we need to start thinking broader, I mean, not just downtown, just because we have a plan in motion. I think we need to start expanding our vision to what we want the entire city to look like. And once you give these, you know, permission to put these things, then you can't take it back, and so I personally, as I said, I can't speak for everyone, we're like a moratorium on these billboards until we can figure out what the vision is, what areas we want to focus on, what to focus on. So again, I would make a motion to just for now leave it as is until we can-- So again, I would make a motion to just for now leave it as is until we can figure out what that whole vision is for the community.
I'll second.
Well, it's one of the discussions also. I think that's important to look at these billboards from the standpoint of, first of all, we look at landscape areas. A lot of what Caltrans calls landscape areas are like these little thin strips of that or nothing with it anyways. I know that on the off-ramps, obviously you want that landscape very well because you want it to be known for good for the community. One thing that Caltrans has lacked for our city is that we never really maintain the existing landscape. If you go up to the one on Pointe Avenue, where we get out for Home Depot, that's very poorly maintained. You just go down to the next ramp and look at West Covina and they do a really big job of maintaining those ramps. On the opposite side, where Howard Johnson is, on that side, it's just not well maintained. I think that staff needs to work more with Caltrans to make sure that they maintain those areas. But the areas, let me ask you, Mark, is what areas, when you say landscape areas, are we talking about those off-ramps or we're talking about along the freeway where it's so thin that nothing will grow anywhere?
The entire length of the freeway. And the Caltrans define the landscape freeway criteria as being, even if there's only one single small vine growing on the wall, that's enough to justify the classification as a landscape freeway.
But also the billboards are proposed on the road, not sort of on private property, I think, in the rest of, not so much on the freeway, or is there some proposals on the actual freeway?
No. If the billboard is oriented to be perceived from the freeway, the billboard company actually is required to obtain a permit from Caltrans. So that's Caltrans, we claim.
Councilmember Checo, the landscape freeway is a term of art by Caltrans. And, you know, they define what a landscape freeway is. Mark is correct that it can even have one little vine. In addition, it could have no vegetation at all if that wall is decorated. That's also considered landscape. So, I mean, it's a term of art that the Caltrans uses. And based on that definition, the entire length of freeway in Baldwin Park is considered landscape, even though you may not actually see any green vegetation.
Another thing I want to add to that, that's precisely my point. If you look at other areas that Caltrans handles, it's green, it's lush, it's clean. And that's what I mean. I mean, we're so used to being, you know, neglected that I think it's become a norm. And I think that's my point. We need to step it up and make sure that they, that they know we're demanding that they take care of us. I know like West Covina and other areas, it does have to do a little bit with staff, you know, being persistent. But at certain point, I mean, they need to take care of us evenly like they do every other city. And again, if once you allow billboards and all that, then they start kind of seeing that, I don't want to say our priority is not, you know, taking care of our community, but they start making us second to everyone else that has all these open walls with green. So I don't want to start, again, I want to end that perception that we're not interested in keeping our city looking nice. And yes, we need to be a lot more aggressive with Caltrans, but it's the message we're sending by allowing this freeway to be saturated with all these messages and signs that say we're not interested in looking like, you know, a respectable city with all these gentleman clubs and all that kind of stuff. Again, to me, it's more the messaging that we're sending out that we are not going to tolerate it. And they need to take care of us, just like any other city.
And the six or five area is a little worse than the 10.
Yes. And it's really a shame because the 210 freeway is a freeway that people travel to, the 15 to Las Vegas, let's just say, right? And that's a beautiful wall. The decorations on that are really beautiful. And it's a shame that when that was negotiated, that wasn't thought of at least decorating the walls that so many people traveled to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess now we go into post session?
Yes.